One. Good evening. Welcome to this hybrid meeting for the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education. Today is May 10, 2021, and I'm calling the open session to order. The first item on the agenda for the open session is to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Costa. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solomon. Any comments, questions, anything you'd like to add? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is to move into closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members of this board, Dr. Karen Couse, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, will move to closed session under general provisions, Article 3-305b, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Also, to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to those negotiations. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Lee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solomon. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes to move into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Two, one. Good evening. I would like to reopen the, this hybrid meeting for the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education. Today is May 10th, 2021, and I'm calling the open session back into order, into session. The first item on the agenda after the personnel portion of the meeting tonight is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education, members of this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, Mr. Dan Hushen, supervisor of human resources, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, met in closed session under general provisions Article 3-305B, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline to motion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, as well as to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to negotiations. This session was for information and discussion purposes only. No actions were taken. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board at the end of the superintendent's report. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Jones, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you. Okay, before we move into the next item on the agenda, for those that are watching the live stream, this hybrid meeting is being livestreamed to the public as well as being opened to a maximum of 20 members of the public to attend in person properly distance. This meeting will continue to follow the governor's executive order, which recommends following the most current guidelines from the CDC and Maryland Department of Health regarding social distancing, including without limitation avoidance of larger gatherings in crowded places. If members of the public would like to submit comments to the record by email, you can submit those comments to Ms. Gail Manley during this meeting to gmanley@kent.k12.nd.us. Your email submission will be read during the public participation opportunities of our meeting tonight based on the timing of your comment submission following our superintendent's report or the administrative services portion of our meeting. Members of the public who are attending this meeting in person will be able to participate during those portions of the agenda as well. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 12th, 2021, the open session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from April 12th, 2021, open session meeting.
We have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Costa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 26th, 2021 public budget hearing. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion, Bill Group.
Ms. Sullivan, do you have the motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Couch, the superintendent's report?
Thank you, President Gatz, members of the board. I have a few things that I'd like to report on, first of which is the comprehensive audit for special education. That has been completed for Kent County Public Schools. Each local school system completes the comprehensive audit regarding the performance of students with disabilities with annual determinations. There are four determination categories. One of them is needs requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial interventions. The Kent County Public Schools Special Education Department received determination of needs requirements in Part B, which is ages three to 21 years old, and Part C, which is the infants and toddlers program. KCPS was 96% to 97% compliant with no systemic errors or problems noted in either area. And I want to give special thanks to Dr. King and her staff for doing such a great job for the audit. It was quite comprehensive and took a lot of time. Our principals also did a great job and their staff as well. Dr. Karen Salmon and Dr. Susan Getty, who is the state board member from MSTE, came to visit Kent County Public Schools on May 6th. Dr. Sperry at Kent County Middle School and Ms. Rose at Garnet Elementary did a great job hosting Dr. Salmon and Dr. Getty at their respective schools. Mr. Gatz also joined us at Kent County Middle School. One of the things that was very impressive to Dr. Salmon was how we served our students throughout the pandemic. And she was very impressed with our precautions that we have in place to make sure that our kids are safe. She stated that we were some of, that some of the larger schools are only serving 30% of their students, which to me is unbelievable. So kudos to Kent County Public Schools. She said we did a great job and she was very impressed. So thank you again to the staff that hosted her. Rachel Viegien, she is currently a special education teacher at Galena Elementary and has been with Kent County Public Schools for four years. This past season, Rachel led the girls' soccer team to a seven-and-four season. She was undefeated in 1A competition. Six of her athletes were named first-team all-district with an additional three students earning honorable mention. Congratulations to Rachel because she was selected as Bayside Conference Girls varsity Soccer Coach of the Year. Galena renovation project, the fire marshal tested the fire suppressor and the fire alarm system. We passed inspection. The kitchen also passed inspection from the health department. There are a list of items that the contractor still has to resolve. And as soon as those things have been resolved, we expect that the kitchen will be turned over to the school system in short order. to the school system in short order as well. We're waiting, and it's been a long time for this project to be completed. So having access to the kitchen at Galena is going to be huge for the school system and for the school. Renovation at Rock Hall Elementary, the tour is scheduled for May 14th at 10:00 AM. I know that some of you have already indicated that you will plan to be there. I'm waiting to hear which commissioners will be in attendance. I'm fairly certain the Commissioner of Vididian is going to be there, but I'm not sure about the others as well. And then finally, just wanted to send out a special shout out, a special thank you to Acme. They provided Kent County Public Schools with PPE for our schools. They provided hand sanitizer wipes, they provided hand sanitizer spray, adult and child face masks, and disinfection wipes. So this was all collected from their employees and from donations from the community. So that, I wanted to thank Ms. Stewart for organizing all of the supplies and taking them out and delivering them to the schools. So it was really a community effort. So I just wanted to acknowledge them for their donation.
And I would also add that the store manager is a graduate of Kent County High School.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Couch. The next portion of the agenda is the Golden Anchor Award.
We have a number of Golden Anchor Awards that we would like to give out today. And really, it's about acknowledging and honoring all of our remote learning hubs. As many of you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, we had a situation where we had some of our students that were only in school for two days a week. They had to find ways in order to have adult supervision and also have access to the internet so they could complete their virtual learning. And we started a partnership with Support Our Schools and also brought in Kent Forward. And they helped to identify organizations that were willing to provide that additional support and supervision to our families and our, and our students. And so this is an opportunity to acknowledge and to thank all of these organizations for their expertise and their help. I know they developed a lot of close relationships with the students, and I know the families were very, very excited to have the supervision and also the support from these groups. Community donations also were collected to help with the remote learning hubs. They purchased supplies, whiteboards, pens, headphones, whatever the learning hubs needed. I also want to acknowledge our own, our own staff for providing lunches and meals to the students when they were in the learning hubs themselves. So there was really a community effort. And, and so I would like to call each one of them up to come and accept this award and our expressly provide our sincere gratitude for everything that you've done to help our students. The first one is Betterton United Methodist Church, Pastor Bill Carroll. And I know Sue Cooper was going to be here to accept the award for Betterton Church. I don't see her. Okay. Presbyterian Church of Chestertown, Pastor Joel Tolbert and Terry Roy. Thank you. We spent a lot of time talking on the phone.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You'll just stay up here. Oh, let me go ahead and announce that. There is, we're also providing additional checks. There were community donations that were secured, and these are funds that were left over and providing each of the hubs with the additional funds for your, for your support as well. Rock Hall United Methodist Church, Pastor Gary Creed. And I don't, I'm not sure. And the next one, Eastern Shore Land Conservation South Press Environmental Education Center, Wayne Gilchrist. I should get my mouse because who's going to feel pressed? He's trying to get in. And the last is Trinity Lutheran, Reverend Jim Driscoll, Betty Douglas, and Sheila Lepdahl. This was definitely a form of ministry, and we thank you so. You're very great. I'd like to get a picture, and we have checks for you.
Thank you.
Guys, if you want to get a picture for Kent News.
Are you a closer attention here?
Okay. Can all look in this way? Good. Thank you very much. One more. Thank you very much.
Welcome to say something. Got the microphone here?
As a member, can I take my last photo?
Yes.
As a member, we had, we've met four days, four members a year, and then finally we went three. But we had, the eight members had stayed with us. They, we took one day apiece. We had to do that. And we, it was a rewarding situation overall with both the kids and the school. The school was a great help because, as you know, the internet didn't always work. So, but no, it was fine. And I'm glad we were able to do it and hear our call. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You had internet?
And mine.
I just wanted to thank Karen and the school system. Certainly, the SOS team that provided us with a lot of support and resources. And we had some children that came out, young children, that had very little, if any, experience with the outdoors. Cried when they went into the woods, refused to step over a small log. When it ended, at the end of it, with the support from the class of teacher to work the screen through with the kids. And certainly the SOS folks that came out periodically to check on us. This little guy was collecting insects by the end of the session. And we had grades from, we had kids from five to 13 periodically through the process. And it was a beautiful thing to observe how natural it was for that age group to be together each day and accept each other's differences and support each other, and even sometimes just wrap their arms around each other. So it was, it was a good experience and a good reflection on, on the families, the parents, and the public schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to make sure that each one of them understands the gratitude that all of us share and the help that you provided. You really filled a niche that we, that we really desperately needed to fill at the time. And I know our families counted on you, and you were there to support them, and we really appreciate everything you did to support our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Ethics Committee appointment. This is an action item. We have a, an opening on the Ethics Committee. And this is for a three-year term. Do we have a motion to recommend?
I'd like to nominate Kita Sorrell Camper.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Johnson. Any comments, further questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is the Board and Trustee appointments. This also is an action item. The administration is recommending Dan Hushen to serve as the Kent County Public School representative on the ESMEC Health Trust, MAVE LSA Board, and MAVE Workers Comp trustees, and as an alternate for the MAVE Risk Management Board and the ESMEC Energy Trust. Do we have a motion to have Mr. Hushen be that person with multiple hats?
And this is, we'll have to call the motion. This is to repave on Mr. Silver.
Yes, that's correct.
These are all appointments that Mr. Silver had, and upon his retirement, the board has to appoint somebody else to take his place.
I'm, and I'm moved that we approved Mr. Hushen to serve KCPS as representative on the board as named in the application.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Mr. Hushen? You're up for that wonderful, multiple hats that you're going to be wearing there for a while. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the superintendent's fiscal year 2022 budget. Dr. Couch?
Thank you, President Getz, members of the board. This is probably the fifth or sixth time that we've gone through this budget. I'm going to very quickly go through it. There is, I'm just going to highlight a change that has happened. We went through the district goals, vision, mission, all of the factors that affected our budget. We've been through the state allocations. These are the pieces of revenue that we will get from Kerwin. We received notification about the concentration of poverty grants that we will be receiving for Garnett and for Rock Hall Elementary School. So that has, is already starting to make its way to us. As you know, the concentration of poverty grants, we will have to hire a nurse practitioner at those schools, a community liaison, someone that would help with organizing volunteers and also with outreach to the community. And then based on a needs assessment, they would use the rest of their funding to, to fund school priorities.
With Garnett and Rock Hall, the two schools you mentioned, last time with 80% poverty?
Yes. This is the accompanying legislation with Governor Hogan. This is the language for Kerwin, which talks about how we will be funded per pupil. And we will be excluding the September 30th, 2021 moving forward. It will also not be included in this year's funding as well. These were the budget requests that we had. This minimum wage, $40,000, to help us get closer to the required minimum wage. School furniture, finishing the gym floors, painting the gym. The interscholastic sports at Kent County Middle School, the bus contractor increase, and then the increase for our nursing staff. We also have money set aside for the KBLA Transportation Secretary, bus fuel increase, bus maintenance, food service, support, supervision for block scheduling, and also for the athletic trainer. You'll see salary increase as per the negotiated contract, the healthcare increase, and also fixed charges. You'll see a change in this particular, oops, this is not, this is, sorry, this is the, I think this is the wrong one. Sorry, this is not the updated one. It should be, yeah. There should be a revised one that should have been loaded up into the. Hold on, just one second. Because there was just a slight change. We had a instructional assistant that was not included in the, in the budget that we had to add back in. It was inadvertently left off, and it was a special education IA that has to be filled at the high school. So that position, let me see if I can move over here. Yep, that's it. So that changed it. You'll see it was just slightly higher than it was in the original PowerPoint. So we had made the adjustment for the amount needed for FY '22. You'll note that that changed the salary increases, so it slightly increased to 620,708. It also affected the fixed charges, and that changed the grand total to $1,590,476. So those were the changes that we had with this budget. If you'll note in your budget workbook, if you look at page three of three on the special education under, it's actually page two of three on the special education 06 category. It's about in the middle of your budget sheet. You'll see that we went from instructional assistants from 13, from 12.25 to 13.25. So that was changed. So we added the additional instructional assistant. And that's where that change occurred. I did present the budget to the county commissioners. We talked about the roof replacement at Kent County High School. And we also talked about the parking lot at Central Office. And they seemed very supportive of those two projects, from what I could tell with their, their budget work session that they had. So with that, I recommend that, that the board adopt and approve the budget as presented. I'll stand for any questions. Do you have any?
I have a question. Why has there been nothing budgeted for Echo Hill? How does it provide security?
We have not had any budget for Echo Hill in quite some time.
Why is it not here?
Let me look. What page?
Case three or four, I'm a working budget.
Yeah, you have to, what category is it?
Current expense fund under. Category 05, other instructional costs. Contracted.
Okay, so I think that that was the amount that we reduced, but we've been able to.
How many pages for that?
I'm trying to look and see exactly where, where it is in the, do you see it?
Yeah, there's nothing there for the rest, for years, but I just, what we do send it there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we have nothing in there. There's no.
What pays for it?
Echo Hill has a grant.
I was just going to say.
Echo Hill has a grant.
They receive a grant. We, we pay a proportion, and then it's, it comes out neutral in the end. So yeah, they have, they have a grant that covers almost everything.
You had me a little worried there because it's Echo Hill.
I know, I know they won there, and I just thought.
But I don't see any funding associated with it, so I was a little concerned that it made it into the budget without me knowing about it. So, yeah, at one point, we did provide some funding to Echo Hill, and that's why it's in there. But we haven't provided funding for them in quite some time.
What's currently, currently?
That's for the high school. And I'm not really sure what they utilize that those funding, that funding for. That would probably be a high school question. And that mountain has been constant since FY '19.
I've got a question. So, from your meeting with the county commissioners, do you feel like we're going to get complete funding for what we're requesting? Because the reason I ask is some of those things are rollovers from the year before. You know, the interscholastic sports at the middle school, and the furniture, and the part-time transportation secretary. Okay?
Yeah. Yeah. Their concern was, you know, how much we were asking over maintenance of effort. Their maintenance of effort has increased about $400,000 based on what they paid for this year. But that is based on the adjustment that is made based on looking at what was provided in other school systems. They look at the amount provided in other school systems, and they say, okay, this is how much was provided above maintenance of effort in these school systems. And if our county doesn't match what other counties are going to do, then they have to, they're usually increased about 2.5%. And our county was one of the counties that had to be increased by 2.5%. So that's the $400,000 that we'll see an increase for next year.
And most of those, in my thinking, are recurring costs, other than the student furniture. So, do you feel comfortable saying that we'll be able to continue to fund those moving forward?
Well, as you know, our funding is based on student enrollment. So, you know, it's, we're going to take out FY '20 enrollment numbers. So I think it really depends upon how active we are and how able we are to get our students to come back in FY '22.
I hate being able to give something and then have to take it back.
Yeah. And that really is a million-dollar question that I don't have an answer for at this point. I know that some of our principals are starting to see some of our kids coming back in to school now. Especially now that we're in four days a week, we're starting to see more of our kids returning. And some of our parents have indicated that had their, were homeschooling their kids, have indicated that they plan to send them back to school full-time next year. So, yeah. Yeah, so I'm not going to say we'll get every single student back. And I would hope that we are. I know that our principals are being pretty aggressive in terms of contacting the families and making sure that they understand that we would like for them to return, and trying to reach out and have that connection with the families. So, I'm hopeful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is an action item. The administration is recommending approval of the superintendent's FY '22 budget. Do we have a motion to approve?
I hope that we approve the superintendent's budget.
We have a motion by Dr. Costa. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any questions, comments?
I think it's a very good budget. I want to thank the administration for making all the time to put it together. Very thoughtful.
Any additional comments, questions? All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Couch. Thank you to the administration as well for preparing this and going through this process again. It seems like it lasts a better part of five or six months every year, so thank you for that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ratification of the 2021-2022 KC ESPA contract. I see Mr. Hushen walking forward.
Thank you, President Getz, Dr. Couch, members of the board. Tonight, I am here to present the 2021-2022 KC ESPA contract for final approval. The fourth negotiating team in the Kent County Educational Support Association have been working since December of 2020. We have come to a final agreement. And this one-year contract calls for a restructuring of the salaries deal, a one-step increase, and additional 1% increase, and enhanced health benefits.
Okay, this is an action item. The administration is recommending the approval of the 2021-2022 agreement between the parties mentioned. Do we have a motion to do so?
I move that we approve the contract for the KC ESPA for the 2021-2022.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Costa. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing opposition, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the ratification of the 2021-2022 KC TA contract.
Yes, so we are also bringing this for final approval. We have the board and the association again has been working since December of 2020. We have reached a final agreement. The one-year contract calls for a one-step salary increase and additional 0.5% increase and enhanced health benefits.
Okay, again, this is an action item. We're looking for a motion to accept the 2021-2022 KC TA contract that has been ratified. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved that we approve the contract for the 2021-2022.
Mr. Johnson has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, the next one, I think you're still there on the. The next one is personnel actions. There we go. Yeah, it's really slow tonight. No, it's acting up now, yeah. Okay, this is an action item for the approval of the personnel actions. The administration is recommending approval of these stated personnel actions. Do we have a motion to do so?
I hope that we approve the personnel actions.
Dr. Costa has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
You'll just bear with me for just a moment. I'd like to introduce Jillian Wharton. She's here with her husband, and she'll be the new assistant principal at Kent County Middle School.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, the next item on the agenda, the first two public participation moments for the evening. Ms. Bailey, do we have any email participation? We do not. And do we have any in-the-room participation? Okay. Okay, so the next portion is the board discussion. Let's start with Dr. Costa.
Well, not much to say. Having been in the school and missing, but looking forward to doing these walkthroughs and maybe go to support events.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Just been busy with my kids at home and at school, but I'm looking forward to our retreat on Saturday, and also the walkthrough of Rock Hall. I remember doing the walkthrough when we were on the Strategic Planning Committee. I'm just talking about what the basement might look like. It'll be nice to come full circle on that. So, thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Great, great. Just coming back from a trip to see one of my other school colleagues, Mrs. Scovion, who serves the Patterson Joint Unified School District in Patterson. We had a good time. We just talked about some of the things that they were doing in there. School district related to COVID-19 and some of the practices they have. So, we said more of a lack, you know, population, so that was a nice time, a nice trip to get away and see him. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we want to, do want to say again, thank you to our educators, such as those, for face-to-face with the children each and every day, the hard work, especially this year, especially what we still have left to come. Teaching is not an easy task. No profession is not an easy task, and it requires a lot of, you know, hours outside of the classroom, all weekends and evenings. But we're grateful that I can come to follow up and grateful for our teachers. We want to thank Dr. Couch and Ms. Stewart for the budget that they presented tonight. I thought it was a great budget, you know, always, always, always. And then I think SOS and the individual churches, both the learning hubs, to serve us our students this year.
Thank you. Ms. McGee?
Wanted to tell a little bit on what Mr. Johnson said, thanking the learning hubs, and following up on something Dr. Couch said, with Acme jumping in and supporting us. And also, I was watching the Chester Town Council meeting last week, and they, the grand unveiling of a really snazzy contact stage that had not been used yet is going to be at Kent County High School. They're allowing Kent County High School to have that stage for graduation for three days, which I think is pretty huge, because it's not an inexpensive piece of equipment. And I think the learning hubs, Acme, which I said is the store manager, and I want to give her a shout-out by name, Angel Chance Cornelius. And Chester Town just shows that when we reach out to the community, they really do respond. And I would like to see us reach out a little bit more. I mean, I think there, I don't think we would get turned down if we knocked on some door doors and really made it, made us appear to be more welcoming to the community. And that is something that I'm going to talk about at our retreat, because I think it's really important. So I want to thank the people that have risen to the task and have answered our call positively.
Just a couple of comments. I definitely want to thank Dr. Seberian, Ms. McGrath, who's not here this evening, for the visit last Thursday with Dr. Salmon and a few of us to allow us to come in and basically interrupt the day, as well as Ms. Rose, who I unfortunately couldn't make that visit. But I know, based on some of the pictures, I was very pleased to see how both schools. It was just a really, it was really special to see, and the kids engaged, and, you know, teachers wearing salmon-colored clothing because Dr. Salmon was coming in. I just thought that was pretty hilarious. But I just want to thank you all for that. I know that's hard work. You know, and I know that Dr. Salmon, as Dr. Couch mentioned earlier in her report, was very happy, and quite frankly, we're doing what so many people want us to do. So, thank you to everyone in every school for doing that. Again, just a shout-out and thank you to everyone that we're working with in partnership as we kind of come through this snapback of COVID. Not sure how fast, you know, but it seems like we race, then we slow down, we race and slow down. I just want to thank everyone, and also the new faces. You know, you're coming on board, so thank you for that. I'm really excited. Heard a lot of great things, so I'm very pleased that you're, you know, going to be joining in a different capacity.
Yes.
But thank you for that. And also, Mr. Hushen, just to see, you know, you kind of stepping into a role. You know, I just want to thank you for that, and just everyone looking at where we are. Ms. Stewart, you've been here for a while, but you're rocking it out every day. So just a huge thank you to everyone. The other thing I wanted to mention just for, and maybe this is for discussion for this Saturday at the retreat. I know when Dr. Couch and I and Ms. Stewart were at, with the county commissioners, talking about the Kent County High School route, there was some conversation based around the middle school. And it seemed as if they were asking, you know, what kind of thoughts are there? What are we thinking? And we haven't, we know that it's in the timeline. We haven't really put a lot of thought as to what that looks like. There was conversation based on new school, based on renovations, based on location, based on. So I'm just asking that as we kind of prep and start, you know, getting ready for this Saturday, just to put some thought behind that, so at least we can start having some dialogue as to what that looks like. As the county administrator mentioned, there's, she believes there's money out there to be had. And so maybe that time is at some point here in short order. So I just want to, I know there's a lot behind that. It's not just, here's a new school, peace out. But that being said, I just want us to start thinking about that. You know, kind of hopes and dreams and what we're looking at. It's pretty special, so. And that's all I have from the commencement point. Okay? Okay, the next portion is the education services recovery plan. Oh, I'm sorry, Rachel, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I apologize for that.
I have a few quick things from Belina Elementary School and the high school. From Belina, May, the month of May and June, the PAST has created Belina Race Line. The whole school is separated, well, it's not, is there races? Students in classes are racing through the track as they display any of the character characteristics. They're earning a reward tank for recognition of outstanding driver of the week. End of the year event is planned as well. On May 19th, there's going to be state camera and camera registration. On May 20th, Miss Cowley's fourth grade class will visit the newly found world with Wayne Gilchrist and participate next to these, so we'll teach them about the level of history in the world. And May 24th through May 27th is the end of the year math assessment. From Kent County High School, the training ceremony is May 11th at 6:00 PM. The National Honor Society Investment is May 25th at 6:13 PM. The virtual prom will be on 90.5 FM, May 15th, 6:00 through 8:00 PM. Ape orientation will take place May 18th, 19th, and 20th. Senior awards night will be June 2nd, 6:00 PM on Facebook. The band night parade will be June 3rd, 6:00 PM at KPHS. Graduation will be June 4th, 10 AM through 7:00, and AKDAM at the Alamo.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
And I would note that Ms. Jones' last meeting will be in June.
Oh, wow.
We'll recognize her at that meeting.
How are you holding it together? Okay? Coming to a senior year is coming to an end here.
Yeah, I'm still.
Yeah.
Excitement and nervousness.
Yeah, I just have to, real quick, we ran into a soon-to-be graduate of your class working at JDK, and there was just in the conversation, up, down, up, down, just a lot of weirdness and like excitement and nervousness and all that, so, yeah. You'll do great. All right. Excellent. Okay, the next piece is the recovery plan, summer programs.
Good evening, President Getz, Dr. Couch, members of the board.
Good evening.
It's that time for our monthly update on our recovery plan. And this month, we bring to you, actually, we're delighted to bring to you some of the options that we will be bringing to the students of Kent County Public Schools over the course of the summer. As you know, we feel very strongly about addressing the pre-grade learning gaps that have been part of the struggle that we have all faced together. And that is with the disjointed approach in the school year in terms of face-to-face, hybrid, fully virtual. It has really been a test in terms of resilience on the part of both the students and the staff as well. So, many of our teachers, families, administrators have had their hand in putting together what we're going to share with you tonight, and will be sharing with the public after this meeting. And it is truly a multi-year approach to really, really look at what we can do to infuse summer learning and address both the academic as well as the social, emotional learning needs of our students. They are placed in order of age level, and I'd just like to do a quick walkthrough. We begin early, in the early years, with playgroups. So the playgroups are for three-year-olds, and that will be a community-based approach where, under the direction of Dr. Keen and Michelle Serino, and Flo. So the playgroups are for three-year-olds, and that will be a community-based approach, where under the direction of Dr. Keane and Michelle Serino and Flo Tarell, we will be bringing staff out of the community, and parents will have an opportunity to sign up and participate in these very interactive, engaging, hands-on opportunities for three-year-olds. Garnett Elementary School will offer their annual Cub Club in the summer, and this is really designed to help the youngest learners, that it's only open to Henry Highland Garnett students that are entering pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade. One of the changes that happens this summer is the amount of time. So that Cub Club will begin on August 2nd, and it will run all the way through August 19th. That's made possible because of the braiding of funding, so we're able to transport students almost the entire month of August for these special learning opportunities. The next is that of Acceleration Academies, and this is something unique to Kent County. We will be offering an opportunity for all elementary students entering kindergarten through grade five. This, just like the Cub Club, will run August 2nd through the 19th, and it will be housed in two locations at the bookend of our county, both Galena and Rock Hall. Although it will be open to all elementary students, including students at Garnett Elementary. It is almost an entire full-day program that will include meals and transportation at absolutely no cost to families. So that's all provided through the grant funding that our district has received. The middle school is taking a slightly different approach in that they are tying their summer learning to not only the academics of literacy and math, but also looking more project-based. And they will be affording an opportunity for their students to earn service learning credits through some project-based learning in the summer. And as you see on here, they can earn almost up to 36 service learning hours, which is a great boost for students entering high school. The middle school academy, again, will be open to rising sixth, rising fifth graders, those that are entering sixth grade and entering seventh grade. It will run Monday through Thursday, and just like the other transportation is, will be provided. It was a very intentional design and part of our transition, so that those that are new to the middle school will really have a chance to get their feet in the door prior to the school year and get to know not only the staff, but feel that sense of community as, as a team as well. When we take a look at the high school, the high school is twofold. They'll be ordering, they'll be offering a CTE exploration. This is our very first time ever doing this, and the staff has been so incredibly supportive. They've really designed this entire thing. And what they've done is they, they've taken a look at the different pathways, and they're going to offer a sampling of each of the pathways. So students will have a chance to get in there, try out, and actually do some project-based learning during this time as well. It's a great way for those that perhaps are new to the high school to see all that our small high school has to offer. This will be open to students entering ninth grade and 10th grade as well. Although it is not on what we have listed here, there will also be what we know to be true in the summer for students that are in need of course recovery. We'll also be transporting students for credit and course recovering offerings as well. We talked a little bit tonight about the importance of our community, and I really need to be sure to mention the number of community partners that are making these one-of-a-kind summer programs possible. We have our, our partners that step up all year long, including SEEP, including Echo Hill, and we have, the public library has been instrumental. We have so many that sign on. When you write a grant for a program beyond the school day, those grants very often require you to have partners, and we have not reached out, Sultana, there isn't one that we've reached out to that has turned away and said, we're not able to help this year. Sometimes we get in a little bit of a bind because we have such a small winner to turn a grant around, but not in Kent County. They say, let us know, we'll work with you, and we want our students to be able to have these special opportunities. That also includes the area of youth arts. Our local arts council has been phenomenal, and we want our summer programs, and you'll get the flavor of this as you look at what we're going to post for the public, to really respond to the whole child. So you'll see that effort to pay attention to not only the social, emotional needs, but that artistic creative side as well, and then that hands-on learning and a real laser focus on addressing those learning gaps in both literacy and math. So the purpose of tonight was to just give you an overview and also have a chance to share how very different this summer will be and how much above and beyond what we typically offer, which is our key program, our Kent Enrichment and Exploration. So that's not on here. That is for identified students, and will take place for 16 days in the month of July. So we have that as well. We'll be offering right as soon as school gets out through the entire summer. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that our teachers have signed up, and they will be teaching every single program. So I think that's a pretty powerful thing. I have colleagues in other eastern shore districts that are saying, we can't get our teachers to teach, they're exhausted, they need a break. We have, just by the work of our principals and the psych coordinators, the outreach, our jobs, and our positions are being filled, and that says something about the commitment of our staff. So with that, I would like to just pause and ask if there are any questions?
I have a couple.
So with the three-year-old program, is it open to any three-year-olds or just the ones that are like in the Rock Hall Elementary School program?
So that's a great question. So the, the programs at the two schools, the Acceleration Academies, you have the playgroups in the community that are open to anyone.
Yeah, that, that was my first question.
They are open to any. The Cub Club is Garnett only.
Is that because of the dictates of a grant?
Yes, Judy Center grant, Judy Center funded. And, but the other program is the first time ever that we're able to offer for the youngest students, both in Galena and Rock Hall. So that's open to any three-year-old.
You say all site locations like what?
So that's a great question. I know that Dr. Keane, if she were here, she'd be able to answer specifically, but we oftentimes will reach out and partner with locations such as churches, or it may be SEEP that we're reaching out. I don't know exactly which location, Jeff, but that's something that, we wanted to be representative of the entire county. And again, we, we are going to the community, so we'll find out the best location that would have an appropriate site for that age group as well.
I have another question. What about just more summer reading per every student?
That's a great question. Oh, absolutely. So a big part of our mission in the summer is to increase the amount of reading that students are doing. And we do that not only with the expectations that are set through the classroom teacher, so that's a big part of our wrap-up at the end of the year, is clearly defining what is expected in terms of the volume that students should read over the summer. One thing that's very different is you notice we have a variety of schools that will be open. That means that they'll also have access to media materials and books, as long as it follows the COVID guidelines. I mean, we've been a little challenged with that, but because of the literacy grant, we are able to purchase and send home books for the students as well. So I think, last year, I believe Dr. Costa, we shared with you, for the first time, we tried virtual book studies or book clubs in the summer, and we have two teachers that will be hosting those again. So what we do during that time is students are able to read books of their choice. We give them a menu of books to read, and then they get together and they have virtual book talks and book clubs. And that's been something kind of unique and special for, for students that take advantage of that.
I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I'm really happy that we're doing things beyond our traditional summer school. I mean, my, my sense is that in the past, summer school has been primarily for students who need intervention or grade recruiting, and there is a, there's another demographic in our school system that sometimes gets overlooked. So I'm really happy that we're able to do that and happy that it's not all classroom-based. I mean, there are a lot of lessons to be learned by just being outside. And going to Echo Hill or the Sultana or SEEP is beyond the, the resources for some families, so I'm glad that we're making that possible. My question is, how are we making that possible? From grants? And is this something that we could try to do more than just this year?
It's a great question. And so, early on, when we designed the program, I have to say, it was the idea of our principals. They were determined to make the summer look appealing and different and project-based, and that's elementary, middle, and high school as well. It is made possible because of the S R two funding, which will guarantee it for two summers. However, I will say that we're learning lessons because we've been put to the test to learn how to write these grants and turn them around like that, that we will also be aggressively looking for additional supports beyond that through competitive grants. So someday, a dream would be that we'd have local funding to support it as well. I mean, I guess that's, we'll, we'll just keep, in the meantime, trying to find as much through different grants as possible.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say also, you know, that these programs all sound amazing, and I have an elementary school student, a middle school student, and I love that it is project-based and the partnering with the, with the other community organizations, I think is really great. How soon can you register?
Thank you. We're hoping to, I know our team is working together. We're going to be pushing it out tonight on our Facebook page, as well as on our website, and then sharing it with all of our partners so they can help push it out as well. And any parent that does not feel comfortable filling out a form online, we can also give a paper copy. So just call the school, and they'll be happy to provide a paper copy for registration.
And is space limited? Is there something that?
That's a great question. We did not, and Dr. Speary, I know when you're section, you're opening up to anyone. And same thing, I believe, with the elementary principals. So at this point, there's no limit on the number of students that we can take. The more, the merrier.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the teachers who are coming back to.
That's great. Thank you for your option. Okay, the next item on the agenda is administrative services, the expenditure and revenue report. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening, Dr. Couch, President Gatz, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, I just have for information purposes only the monthly revenue and expenditures report. The information is noted as of April 30th to 2021. I did something different with the cash receipt, because I noticed how I was, you know, explaining the expenditures to you all was from July 1st to what is current as of that month end. So I wanted to do the same thing with cash receipts, so it's going to show you what we have received as of, from July 1st as of April 30th, 2021. If you notice in Fund 1, the cash receipts consist of both restricted and unrestricted from our county, state, and federal grants, as well as other state funding, other receipts. To date, as of April 30th, that has totaled $27,562,919.11. Capital outlay that we received, $33,395,114.83. Food service, $630,921.11. We have received for funds, government, and extra trust. So total to date is $31,588,953.85. For our current expense fund, you see what has been expended. This includes incomferences and both incomferences of what has been expended to date. We've expended about 90%. Total expenditures, $25,773,000, $391.09. School construction, $5,557,735.21. And as you know, the school construction is based on a reimbursed basis on our projects. Food service, we have to be expending about 59%. With our incomferences and our good state expenditures, $871,014.29. And our restricted fund expenditures, this is our grant funding that we received, federal awards, 43% we have received, but as you know, with restricted funds, we have to extend the funding out first, and then we get reimbursed. That was $326,656.37. I did add this last half as an overview, which is pretty much a comparison with our receipt and what we've received so far, our receipt and what we've expended. I wanted to try to show, but I can't unfortunately.
Can you make it smaller?
Yeah, I tried to, like a little breaking. But here we are, we show about 39% of our Fund 1 expenditures. And then you would see with our receipts, we received about 41% of our Fund 1 receipts. And as well as our Fund 5 expenditures, about 1% of it, we received about 5% from, 1% of our Fund 5 receipts. So those are end of the same. Our school construction Fund 3, 5% of receipts, and 8% of expenditures. And with our restricted funds, we've expended about 5%, but we have received, what are restricted funds? I'm going to have to add that, add that in there. But it shows you the overall review between our expenses and our revenue. If you have any questions, please let me know, but this was just for information purposes only.
Just a question on, on the food service piece. How are we tracking with, with lunches and how? The only reason why I ask is that I, I have, I've heard from different kids, friends of my son, where they just love their, what's being offered in school lunch, like they'd rather have school lunches than bring food from home. So I'm just wondering, like, how is that going? Like, I mean, I know we're, we've got more kids in the school, so obviously we're going to have, but it seems like it's okay?
It's going good so far. I mean, most of the waivers have been approved up until, I believe, even for next fiscal year 2022. So we've been trying to incorporate, I know we did cold, a lot of cold in the beginning when it was COVID shutdown, but not bringing, bringing in more of the warmer foods. Those things that the city's life has been special pleasure, and Ms. Judy has been the one to kind of help it up and make sure that all the schools are getting what they need.
Yeah, they, they seem to be doing very well. At least there's a lot, they're excited about it.
Yeah, and I saw today, they are still, you know, doing, being able to do the pickup and come to the school and pick up their lunches and, you know, even though they have to be in their classrooms, but they're, they're doing it for the most part.
That's great, okay. Thank you. Any other questions regarding expenditures? No? Okay, that was just for information only. Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The next item on the agenda is public participation again, Ms. Manley. Do we have any submissions? And nothing from the room? Okay.
Okay, the next item is the notification of our next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County will be a board retreat on May 15th, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Southern Hall, located at 206 South Queen Street in Chester Town, Maryland, 21620. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on June 14th, 2021, beginning at 5:30 PM with the open session in this room. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. This meeting will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, this room again, at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland, 21661. The last item on the agenda is the administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to do so? We have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Costa. Would anyone like to stay longer? Hearing no on that, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.